This is November 20th, 2017. It is 5:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, roll call, please.
Wilson, here. Davidson?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
McCambell?
Here. Okay, first on the agenda tonight is oath of office. We have Councilman Billups here tonight, and we're gonna let you do the fun stuff.
Alright.
Kathleen?
Alright.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
I, John Billups.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support...
...the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge all the duties of...
Discharge all the duties of...
...the office of council member...
The office of council member.
...in and for the city of Burlington, Iowa...
In and for the city of Burlington, Iowa.
...as now and hereafter...
As now and hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so now that it's official, if you get mad at the end of this meeting, holler at him. Okay. Next, we have some mayor's awards, and we've got a bunch of them, so I've got a lot of reading to do, and it doesn't look like we've got everybody here that is gonna be on the list, but these were people that were really beneficial to Chad, myself, for the Fireball Run. We couldn't have done it without having this group of people to help us, and they were really sharp, bright, and brilliant. It's good to know that this is the future of Burlington. It makes me sleep better at night knowing it. But we'll start off tonight, the first award is to Aldo Leopold Middle School. Be it known, and if I read off your name, if you're here, would you just pop up like popcorn so we can see who you are? That would be just fantastic. Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you all for being Model Burlingtonians. Thank you for your assistance with Fireball Run. We couldn't have done it without you. On behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, this mayor's award is presented to teachers Katie Salisbury and Michael Carper. Aldo Leopold Middle School students Victoria Almac... And if I say your name wrong, I'm sorry. Did I say that right? Okay. I appreciate your honesty, but we appreciate you coming down all the same. Couldn't have done it without ya. Daphne Edwards. David King. Macklin Palmer. Alexander Rice. Alright. Trenton Strawhacker. That's what I'm talking about. On November 20th, 2017, this mayor's award is presented to Aldo Leopold Middle School, presented by Shane A. McCambell. Would you guys come on down so I can get a picture taken with you guys? That would be awesome. Look at these great-looking kids. Look at the excitement on their faces. They're so happy to be here. Alright, come here, you guys. Alright. What weight class? Oh, man. Somebody use a little bat? Can you hold that? Alright. Alright, man, now I'm so excited. Can we get somebody from Aldo? Anybody wanna say something? Right over here at the podium there.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say thank you very much for allowing us this opportunity, because I know that the students had a great time, and we learned a lot of interesting things in this area that we weren't aware of before, so thank you.
Okay, and thank you. Alright, we appreciate you guys. Thank you so much for coming down. Alright, moving right along, we've got another group that was very helpful to us. It was Edward Stone Middle School. So, same thing goes, if I read your name and you're here, please pop like popcorn. We wanna see who you are. And if I say your name wrong, I apologize. It's John Billups' fault. Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you all for being Model Burlingtonians. Thank you for your assistance with Fireball Run. We couldn't have done it without you. On behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, this mayor's award is presented to teachers Craig Fleece. I remember you. And Michael Carper. Michael's not here tonight. Edward Stone Middle School students Thomas Fell. Hannah Hubelman. Mattingley Lair. I remember you. Christian Snyder. Hey, how you doing? Emma Whitcamp. And Emily Wedsmall. These two students. Man, I'll tell you what, you guys are rock stars. On November 20th, 2017, this mayor's award is presented to Edward Stone Middle School. Would you guys come on down and get a picture taken with me? Don't look so excited to see me. Because it really hurt my feelings here. I've only got too much to do. You hold that. Alright. Hey, would you guys please have a word?
Well, on behalf of the staff and students of Edward Stone Middle School, we wanna thank you for this opportunity, Mayor McCambell and Chad Palmer. It was a pleasure to work with you throughout this process. Our students learned a great deal in practical use of critical thinking, problem-solving, research skills, communication, and collaboration, so a lot of benefits from this experience. Thank you.
Alright, man, what a group of, great group of kids. Who's that that just came in here? What's his name?
Tristan Lee.
Did I just say his name?
He's with Burlington.
Okay, I was just checking. Okay. Alright, this next one goes to the Burlington High School students. It's the same thing, they were all, we had a group of them, and they all worked together. It was just, it was awesome. So be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you all for being Model Burlingtonians. Thank you for your assistance with Fireball Run. We couldn't have done it without you. On behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, this mayor's award is presented to teacher Melissa Nelson-Chipraz. There she is. And Burlington High School students Gerald Nickel. Jake? Where's Jake? Jake's not here. Jared Lewandowski. Teida Payne? Okay, 'cause I know I said that wrong, that name wrong anyways. Caitlin Fraser. Emily Bennett? Emily's here, alright. Savannah Daigle. And Dominic Snyder. Alright. Come on down, both of ya. Alright. On November 20th, 2017, this mayor's award is presented to Burlington High School. All two of ya. Alright. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down. Thank you. You look so nice. Did you get dressed up for me? You wanna give one more? You're supposed to be on this. I know, it's just a possible way out. Someone take that shirt off. Alright. Would you guys please have a word?
Dominic would love to.
That's always good when somebody does it like that. Lay it out, Dominic. Lay it out, man.
We just wanna thank you for the opportunity to help us, to allow us to work with you guys, both in, just a different opportunity for us outside, to work outside of the school, and have a different opportunity.
Thank you, Dominic. This guy did it like he's a professional speaker or something. Okay, I've got a lot of names on this list. This is West Burlington High School. We definitely, or West Burlington School, we definitely appreciate you as well. On behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I'd like to thank you all for being Model Burlingtonians. Thank you for your assistance with Fireball Run. We couldn't have done it without you. Teacher Jeff Erickson? There he is. Look at him, he's flexing. Don't, don't flex. What's the matter with that guy? Stay stood, just remain standing, sir. And then if I say your name, just pop like popcorn. Please stand up so we can recognize you and see who you are. West Burlington School students Henry Adams. Lauren Allen. Kylie Hama. Hama time. Mason Watkins. Zach Wilkie. Connor Bush. Javion Crowe. Man, they left you hanging on this one. Sage Eggar. Elijah Bradley. Kennedy Ritter. Logan Shirts. Logan Beneszek. Jai Lu. Anthony Moad. Ashi Panaka. You kids, man. Isabella Murphy. Aaron Miles. Is that Aaron Miles right there? Yeah, remain standing, Aaron Miles. He's got a shirt on, too. Alright, way to represent. Aubrey Hustler. Thank you for coming down, Aaron. Aubrey Hustler. Maddox Reggins-Biller. Jonas Olson. Eric Lucas Degroot. Jayana Haley. Madeline Hamilton. Emery Watson. Natlin, Natlin Blakeman. I said that wrong. Is that, did I say that right?
No.
How do you say it?
Adalin.
That's what I meant to say. Natlin Blakeman, thanks for coming down, Natlin. Jonas Olson? No, wait a minute. Andrew Elmore? Kinnick Christopherson? Prayton Doty? Taren Havner? Brendan Brown? Logan Kelly? Ellie Davis? Kaylee Kramer? Sina Malruzi? Jordan Nup? Isabella Blafus? Kayden Tilly? Micah, Kayden Tilly? Alright, alright. I was looking for somebody. Thank you, sir. Micah Mixer. Micah Mixer's here. Lively Christopherson? Cody Allen? Abigail Benz? Sophia Armstrong? Sophia, Sophia, okay. Alvia Burton? Josh Glenn-Denning? Eli Jordan? Braden Roscom? Liam McCollum? Hayden Etchison? Sonica Gautam? Bailey Hayes? You guys are like, how many kids are at West Burlington? All of them. Savannah Payne? Lindsey Kelly? Tristan Lee? Tristan Lee is here. There he is. Kyler Capps? Kyler is here. Alright. Grayson Dugger? Ruby Orr? Bailey Hayes? Savannah Payne? What?
Forgot Talon Orr.
Who'd I forget?
Ruby Orr, Talon Orr.
Man, this is his first night on the job, and he's already working. See, which one did I forget? Say that again.
You said Ruby Orr, and then you skipped over Talon. It's on, right here.
Talon Orr. Both of yours. Aubrey Allen? And Sawyer Garlington. Okay, well, the ones that are here, would you guys please come on down? I'd love to get a picture taken with you all. West Burlington. Alright. So you guys were awesome. High fives all around. That's all I got. They're cheap. They don't cost money. Alright. Can I get one of you guys to hold this? We'll all just, we'll all stand together. Let's all get together. We all in on that? Hold on, hold on. Is everybody, can we all be seated here? Okay. Did you get that? I think he's flexing now. Would you guys please put the, uh... Yeah, Kyler's gonna talk.
No, I'm not.
No, he likes talking in class, though. He likes talking in class. Well, anyways, thank you very much, and thank you. This was a great opportunity. It's something that, I mean, hopefully the kids and the students get to do again. It may be not exactly Fireball Run, but at least, you know, that kind of experience. It was really something that they really enjoyed. I enjoyed it, too. Maybe I'm a little selfish, but I got a kick out of it maybe more than the kids did sometimes. But again, thank you very much for including us, and it was a blast, and hopefully the students learned something, and I'm sure they did, to make me look good. No? Thank you. Thank you, West Burlington. So appreciate you. Alright. This next mayor's award is to my partner, who I was on the Fireball Run with, and I was gonna do all this elaborate words and all of this stuff, you know, and gush over you, but, you know, we had our moment on the way back. You know what I mean? At that 15-hour drive, and you know how I feel about you, my friend. But I'd like to give you this award to make it official. Says be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I'd like to thank you for being a Model Burlingtonian. I could not have picked a better partner for Fireball Run, like I picked ya. You are my favorite CEO, and someone I call a friend. Thank you for your commitment and expertise. You helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On November 20th, 2017, this mayor's award is to the CEO, Chad Palmer. Come on down. I passed out a blanket if he's on the road, so I better go ahead and give this to you anyways.
Add it to my collection.
Yeah, sure.
She'll do the one right now.
Now they won't pass on that one. But please, man, you have a word.
Thank you for the award, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, I got, he said friend, and that's how I viewed it as well. I became friends with the mayor, and not everybody gets the chance to do that the way that I did. You spend $100 in a car with a guy, you get to know him a little bit, but, no, and we're still friends after $100 in a car together. What a great experience, though, and what a great opportunity just to sell Burlington to the rest of the world, and I think that you, the community, will get to see that here real soon. Thank you.
I also have one surprise mayor's award, and I'm really glad to be giving this one out tonight as well. So be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a Model Burlingtonian. Thank you, Macklin Palmer, for letting your dad, Chad, go on the Fireball Run with me. I couldn't have made it without your dad. He wouldn't have been on Fireball Run if you would not, if you had not been okay with it. You helped Burlington, you helped make Burlington... Boy, I'm really messing up on yours, Mac. You helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On November 20th, 2017, this mayor's award is presented to Macklin Palmer. And I do mean, he wouldn't have come on if you would have given me okay. So, appreciate you letting your dad go on that. Let me give you one of these. You have those court tapes. You don't know? Court tapes get stuck like that. Man, you seem so tall today. Just kidding. Would you like to have a word, Mac?
Tell him, tell him why it was a big deal. What did I miss?
You can do it. Believe in yourself. We all believe in you.
I don't know. I wanna thank you for partnering with my dad. It's a pretty big deal, because you, the mayor, and my dad, that's a big deal.
It's a big deal.
Yeah. And I want to just thank all of you. I don't know what to really say, but...
I think that says enough right there. Thank you for coming down, Mac. We appreciate you. So it was a big deal? Of course. Anytime I get to travel anywhere with Chad Palmer, it's a big deal.
It was her birthday that day.
That's right. That's right. That's right. That was a big deal. I have a MacGyver's Award to give out, and then we'll get started with the regular. On behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to present you with the Mayor's MacGyver Award. Angus MacGyver was known for having the ability to deactivate a bomb with a piece of chewing gum and a paper clip. You are the man, and you made it happen, and you know what I'm talking about. Thank you, in capital letters, and you know what I'm talking about. Man, you came through in a big way, short notice. On November 20th, 2017, this mayor's MacGyver Award is presented to Chief Matt Trexel. Come on down, chief. I hope to never ever do something like that to you again, but I sure appreciate, I sure appreciate you, man. Chief, have a word for you.
First, I do appreciate the award. I'll share that with my coworkers, Captain Logan and Firefighter Sneller. You know, I basically said, hey, you guys gotta put this flag up, and they did it. So I didn't do much of the actual work, but the whole planning committee thing, it was a lot of fun. When Chelsea asked me, hey, would you be on this committee? I tried to use my MacGyver skills and pawned it off on somebody else, and it didn't work, but it was actually, Chelsea did, I thought, did a great job with that, and the committee was fun and had a good time. Thanks for the work.
Awesome. Thank you, chief. Alright. Now that we got that done, I'm gonna let you guys get out of here. You don't have to stick around for everything else, so thanks for coming down so much. We appreciate ya, and we appreciate all the help. Thanks, guys.
Tell me the day.
No, I probably just... Gotta make it official, man. That's right. That's right, man. I dropped the ball, man.
But that's alright. Had a great turnout.
I hope you've got a permit to carry those, sir. Whatever. I appreciate all the rest of you sitting through that, but that's important to me, so I appreciate it. Alright. All matters listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda, having been discussed or considered to be routine by the city council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual finances miscellaneous, I'm sorry, excuse me, finances miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims. Beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have nine resolutions. The first is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution authorizing an internal loan from General Fund to Tax Increment Revenue Fund. The third is a resolution obligating funds from the Greater Burlington Partnership (TIF) rebate sub-fund of the city's Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year. The fourth is a resolution obligating funds from the Wine Guard (TIF) rebate sub-fund of the city's Urban Renewal Tax Refund, or Revenue Refund, Revenue Fund, excuse me, for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year. The fifth is a resolution obligating funds from the Burlington Crossing (TIF) rebate sub-fund of the city's Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for the appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year. The sixth is a resolution approving annual financial report. The seventh is a resolution approving annual urban renewal report. The eighth is a resolution approving an amendment to the agreement with Veinstrand Kim Inc. to perform the design of the Agency Street widening project. The ninth is a resolution approving Energy Efficiency Plan Agreement Amendment Number 2 to the agreement between the city of Burlington, Iowa and Interstate Power and Light Company to provide grant funding for the design and implementation of programs that improve market awareness and adoption of new technologies to the Bright Ideas Grant Program. And we have some hearings set for December 4th. The first is a consideration of plans and specs for the Flint River Trail Phase 1 South 8, and the second one is a consideration of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the West Avenue-Mason Road urban renewal area pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa. If there's anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed, say so now. Anyone?
Leon Chehan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. You know the drill. Number 2, number 3, number 4, and number 5.
Anybody else from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Can I get a motion?
On our move, approve all items, the consent agenda except those just stated.
Second?
It's moved in second. Kathleen?
Wilson? Aye. Billups?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay, this is time for consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of College Street right-of-way located between Valley Street and Marcus Street, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tisland?
This again is vacating College Street right-of-way. This is the street lying just to the west of a former Apollo school site, between the parking lot and the school. This is an unused roadway, and vacating it and selling to the current owner of the property, Midwest Cornerstone Real Estate. This did go to the Planning Commission on October 24th, and they voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the vacating of the described right-of-way based on petition of the applicant ownership of the property on both sides of the right-of-way by the applicant, and lack of utilities located within the right-of-way, and lack of use by the city as a through-street. As part of the agreement, selling the Apollo school site, this was stated that it would, the city would work with the developer to vacate and transfer ownership of this property, and that's what we're doing at this time.
Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
On air.
Okay.
On our motion to close?
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Wilson? Aye. Billups?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Collie Street right-of-way located between Valley Street and Marcus Street in Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote on it.
Wilson? Aye. Billups?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye. Okay. Now is consideration of West Avenue-Mason Road urban renewal area and plan. Mr. Tisland?
This is the first step in a process as requested by the developer of the property, shown on the map here, just south of West Avenue, Dan Cahill Park West Subdivision. He did come to the council with his development and request TIF funds to be used, so as part of that process, urban renewal plan in area has to be designated. First are three steps in the process, with follow-ups being setting up a TIF district, and then finally setting up a development agreement to approve any funds to be used. So this first process is just setting up a plan, designating the area as an urban renewal area, and we are looking to designate the entire area here highlighted in red. That's the area between West Avenue and Mason Road where some dead-end streets exist and That's the area between West Avenue and Mason Road where some dead end streets exist and future street connections could occur as these areas develop. Mr. Cahill is the first one to develop in this area, again on the north side, looking to install a 16-lot subdivision with a street coming off West Avenue and then dead ending at the south end of his property. So the urban renewal plan just sets up the boundaries and requirements of the development. This is an area where residential housing enterprise is going to occur and further assistance is being requested by the developer in the form of tax increment financing or funds. This meets the requirements of chapter 403 of the Code of Iowa and sets out the proposed project to be undertaken. Again, a single-family condominium mix of 16 lots on approximately eight acres, looking to construct 14 to 18 homes, 10,000 to 27,000 square feet in area for lot size, 180,000 to 275,000 in housing prices. Installing a new street sewer water utilities from West Avenue to the south end of the development. The primary objections as stated in the plan for the urban renewal area are to contribute to a well-diversified, balanced local economy, creating new residential development, job opportunities and strengthening the property tax base, allow for the planning and future connection of new public streets within the urban renewal area to the existing public streets adjacent to the urban renewal area, to meet the housing needs as stated in the Des Moines County Housing Needs Assessment by constructing new single-family duplex homes meeting identified moderate income housing price point, and to create a mechanism for financing the construction of needed infrastructure and to generate funds that can be used to improve housing for low and moderate income families. The total not to exceed amount for the expense of the infrastructure is 350,000. That would be a not to exceed amount, not necessarily the amount that could be granted maximum would be actual cost spent. The project is planned to include approximately 870 lineal feet of new roadway and associated sewer water and other utilities. With that 350,000 not to exceed, up to 134,400 would be set aside for low and moderate income set aside to be used as determined by the city council for that, those housing needs. Preliminary plot again was approved on October 2nd, 2017, just for this property. And again, this is the first step in the process. TIF ordinance would be coming following approval of this, and then finally a development agreement that would spell out the terms for the use of TIF would be at a meeting following that. So this is a long process, another month or so to go through it. So this is just the first step.
Sounds good. Questions or concerns from the audience?
Leon Chahean, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. Here we go again with tax excrement financing. You just listed one of the reasons for doing this was to increase the tax base. If you're granting TIF, you're not collecting tax, you're not increasing the tax base. Mr. Phillips just agreed to uphold the Constitution of the United States, Fourteenth Amendment, equal protection of the law. I've been paying my property taxes for over 30 years here. Somebody comes blowing in, they don't pay property tax. That's unconstitutional. And part of this is being justified, well, we're property poor. Well, you need to dig through the layers a little more. The reason we're property poor in this town is we're income poor. The reason we're income poor is you're subsidizing poverty wage employers. You need to get out of this equal debo nonsense.
Thank you, sir. Marlon?
Marlon Key, 1121 South 12th Street. I have a question. The TIF is supposed to be the difference between the tax on that property at the current time and what it's going to be later? Is that correct?
That's the valuation that would be used to pay for TIF rebate, correct?
Because if you go on the Des Moines County GIF, GIS, that is still listed as being in the revocable trust, which pays no taxes at all. So are we going to base it on how much Dan Cahill paid for that property and divide it out by however many lots he's saying? Also, did he also buy the second property back there, Michael Morfield property?
No. The valuation on there, if I'm correct, Eric, they would bring that on and they would put a determination of what the base value of the land is. The county would would set that, what that base value was. It may, it would take into account the purchase price, but that wouldn't be the only factor that they would use to make a determination what that base value is. The increment would be any value above that. And this is just for the subject, is, we've got one larger area that's, that you have an urban renewal area being established for, and then we'll have a project that is specifically the property owned by Dan Cahill. This project will only use a valuation that's created within the area of what's owned by Dan Cahill.
But then you're going to have Morfield come in and want it.
It would, you're most likely going to have another project that could potentially be coming forward.
In the past, we've only had Dan Cahill's, that one out there by the airport, and I can't remember the exact streets of this, but I think Kestner Street is the last one. But he's the only developer that's ever gotten a TIF out of this deal. And evidently, he had a city council that liked him or something, because nobody else has ever come before the city council asking for a TIF. I don't think we should start it now. He bought the property knowing that he was going to develop it. He should not get help from the city. As Leon says, you know, I don't get help with my taxes, I don't think you guys get help with your taxes. Why should we help him? He bought it knowing how much money he was going to put into it, just like everybody else that's done it. And we went through this whole rigmarole before for the Deer Run.
Pheasant Run.
Pheasant Run, no, Pheasant Run was the one he had. Deer Run was the one that, I can't remember the guy's name.
Negrock.
Negrock. Wanted to do. We don't need to be doing the TIF on these housing developments. They're building these houses for, I mean Sunrise just never asked for a TIF. And they've already got the sewer lines, if you drive out there, they've already got the sewer lines in for those houses that are just drawn on there. Because I want to have to look to see where that road is going to come on through, and it's going to come down through where that house is on West Avenue. The, what am I called, the split foyer? I mean, that's the guy that owns all that, that Jerry Van Barren, however he says his last name. He owns that house up there. And that would be the access into there if it goes a straight line back through Sunrise property. If you look at their, where that trees are, they've already gone out there and cleared the trees for where that road's going to go. And that's where I can look down and I can see the buildings back there. So I don't think we need to be helping him out on a TIF. Just don't even start the process.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Well, I think, I think it's important for me to connect all of these dead ends, because there are a lot of dead ends in that area. And that's one of the main reasons I would like to see this particular area developed, is so we can get some through streets.
Speaking of that, Eric, do you guys still have that map that shows where the streets are going to be?
No, you, fine.
This was based on 1999 plan, not exactly the final determination of street layout, but it does show Dill Street, Gilbert, Jim Kelly, and then the North-South Street as well as Cambridge connecting. Might not be the final way it actually lays out, but it does show that there are a lot of streets out there that need to be connected.
And, and you, you bring up that that was part of a plan, that the, the city council had, you know, wanted done eventually, and that was, when was that?
1999.
1999. So, um, let's.
Over you though?
Yeah. Let's finish our plans, is what I'm kind of wanting to do. I know, and if that's the way we can do it, then let's do it.
Any other comments? Marlon, did you?
That street that shows she's talking about extending on, that's not where that street is. That street is on the other side. Can I go out there for a second?
Go ahead.
To point it out? This street is over here to the dead ends up there. So you're going to have to jog that quite a bit to tie into Dan's road.
Right.
Now, I understand and I agree that you need to bring this road across, that it could tie in to what's there without having to go through Dan's land. And the same way with Dill Street doesn't go through Dan's land.
Counsel? Any other comments? All right. Do I get a motion?
I, motion to close.
Second?
Second?
Thank you, sir. Kathleen?
Wilson? Aye. Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye. Your Honor, I have a resolution to declare a necessity and establish an urban renewal area pursuant to section 403.4 of the Code of Iowa and approve urban renewal plan and project for the West Avenue Mason Road Urban Renewal Area.
Second?
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote on it.
Wilson? Aye. Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
No.
Okay, next is we have a consideration of an ordinance amending chapter 126 Taxi Cabs and Vehicles for Hire of the Burlington, Iowa Code of Ordinances and deleting chapter 127 Vehicles for Hire Drivers in its entirety. Chief?
Yeah, briefly, this was just a typo, it was just left out. If you remember, we went through the process before, and we deleted that, it just didn't get put in the ordinance as such, so that's what that is.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or concerns from the audience? I didn't think there would be, but thank you. Counsel?
None. Motion to close.
Second?
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Wilson? Aye. Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter 126 Taxi Cabs and Vehicles for Hire of the Burlington, Iowa Code of Ordinances and deleting chapter 127 Vehicles for Hire Driver, Vehicles for Hire Drivers in its entirety.
Second?
Moved in second. Let's, let's vote on this.
Wilson? Aye. Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay, ordinances.
Your Honor, I move for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance prohibiting the construction of wells within the city limits for use as potable water sources.
Second?
Good one, my friend. Potable, that's the way it's pronounced. Mr. McGregor?
This amendment modifies the potable well ordinance, but its amendment language changes the non-potable wells by restricting them wholly from being constructed in the area described here. There's a monitoring site from a previous petroleum underground storage, and so with Iowa DNR compliance, we are changing this ordinance.
Now, a couple of questions. We're, we're telling people that they can't put a well in their own yard.
What this amendment does is telling the people, the occupants in this area specifically, that you are not allowed to put a, a well in there. We already have a restriction to not, to not have drinking wells. We do, however, in the rest of the community, allow people to put in a non-potable well source to water their yard, wash their car, upon request through the Water Works Superintendent.
So my question is, there's no right way to do that?
I don't follow.
Well, the reason why we're doing it is so that it doesn't, so that there's no problems in the future of contaminating our water, city water, correct?
Correct.
Right, so isn't there, is there a right way to do it? To have a potable water source on private property within that area without?
You would use the, this Water Works infrastructure in that area. You're not, you're not allowed to put a potable well, water source within the city of Burlington.
That's my, that's my point.
Correct. Because the, the protection of the water.
Right, I'm saying.
And allowing people not to drink that.
Okay, let me rephrase my question. There's no way, there's no way. Here's my question. A guy who has his own property says, I want to put a well on my own property, it's my property, he says, don't tell me that I can't, just tell me, just give me the parameters I have to work with if I want to do it. And you say, what say you?
What say I? Based on this ordinance, I would say that that person could not put it within the boundary described there. If he's outside of that boundary, boundary, with Water Works permission, he is allowed to do that. But not as a drinking water source, as a, you know, other functions, watering your yard, car, that type of things.
I still don't get, I still don't get why a person that has their own property, that why there's no right way that they can, you understand what I'm asking?
I do not.
So it's, it's kind of a separate question from this ordinance.
I'll talk, I'll talk to you later, but I, but I.
There is a right way.
No.
There is a right way. If you want to drill a non-potable, you go to the Water Works and you ask them, and you get it done.
But he's asking, how can I make it so I can, why can't I have a well that I can drink out of, right? Is that?
State code.
Is it state code?
There's a Water Works, if there's a, if there's a water company utility serving that community.
So that's not a Burlington thing, though?
That's through the DNR.
So that is a state?
State code.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was lost.
No, I know, I could tell, I was like, I gotta figure out how to.
I was trying to put it through my mind.
Hey, man, I'm lost on time, Nick, so I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. All right, I know you're watching, so there you go. All right. Anything else? Anybody from the audience, questions or concerns? Yes, sir? Mr. Renteria?
Yeah, Eric Renteria, 907 High Street. I'm generally an anti-regulatory guy. If there's a state law that already bans the, the building of a potable water source on a person's land, why do we need one at the city level just to duplicate that? And I listened to the discussion a couple of weeks ago when they talked about this, and everything was centered around and presented as though this particular area was the impacted area, and it's not. We're talking all of Burlington. And I, I for one, don't understand why you wouldn't be allowed to build a potable well. It just doesn't make any sense to me why you would have that restriction. I have not heard any rationale to this point over the last two council meetings as to why you would ban. In other words, Shane, no one's answered your question as to why you can't have a potable well. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, they answered the question, the state said so. And they, the state says a lot of stuff that doesn't make sense to me.
Right, and I haven't seen that, I haven't seen that regulation, but if it exists, then we don't need to pass this rule because that ban is already in place. All you're doing is adding regulation on top of regulation, there's no point, and you ought not do it.
Thank you, sir.
But we're not talking about the whole community, we're talking about that, that.
This is for, this is for wells in general, right? Any kind of.
We're talking about that area right there.
No, that, that area there is restricted to non-potable wells.
Exactly.
This, this regulation restricts the entire city from potable wells.
No.
It says, prohibits the construction of wells within city limits for use as a potable water source.
With the, with the.
Right. So this is an amendment to that ordinance.
The rest of it's already in, in effect. The only section that's being added is area number two.
Which is that area right there.
The rest of it's already the language that's on the books. Okay, so then the, the, the ordinance, the item number one that's written here is, is poorly written or miswritten because it's not what it says. And if there is a, if there already exists a prohibition of potable water sources within the city, then, then that's not what this is, is talking about. This, this item number one here is, should be written differently. I think that's where a lot of the confusion's coming in.
I understand what you're saying.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience, questions or concerns? Yes, sir?
Leon Chahean, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. Just a question. If the DNR is monitoring this, who contaminated the place?
Sometimes, man, your stock just climbs, sometimes it plummets, but I appreciate that, my friend.
This, this is the result of testing that's gone on from the property that's owned by BNSF. They're, they're involved in a program for cleanup. They did a significant amount of cleanup, and I don't know the process that they went through, but this is a backside of it.
My, my understanding, this is the location of their shops from the 1850s.
Oh, I don't know.
Okay, counsel, are we good? All right.
Your Honor, I move to amend the motion for preliminary adoption, second reading of an ordinance prohibiting the construction of wells within the city limits for use as a potable water source to read as follows. For waiver and preliminary consideration, adoption of the second reading for final adoption of an ordinance prohibiting the construction of wells within the city limits for use of potable water source.
Second?
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote on the amendment first.
Wilson? Aye. Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay, now is amended.
Wilson? Aye. Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move for preliminary adoption, second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter 31 Riverfront Advisory Committee of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Second?
Moved in second.
This ordinance changes the membership composition for the committee. This has gone through and been reviewed by the committee members themselves, and I guess gotten their approval with part of this process. They recommended seeing a reduction in the number of folks that were on this from nine down to five. It also changes representation from staff from being my position to the park superintendent or designee, the park superintendent is who does attend those meetings. And it also adds a requirement for them to submit an annual report to the city council each year. And that is something that the council has requested that we take a look at adding to a good number of our various committees, and since we had this one up, we took this opportunity to make sure that we put it on with it.
Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Your Honor, I move to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second
Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Council?
For me? Your Honor, I move to amend the motion for preliminary adoption, the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 31 Riverfront Advisory Committee of the Burlington Municipal Code to read as follows. For waiver and preliminary consideration, adoption of the second reading for final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 31 Riverfront Advisory Committee of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Thank you, sir. It's been moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote on the amendment.
Wilson? Aye. Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Well done. Resolution.
Your Honor, I move the approval of agreement with the Burlington Steamboat Days for concessions at the riverfront properties known as Burlington Memorial Auditorium, Port of Burlington, and Burlington Depot.
Second.
Moved in second.
This contract is an extension of our existing contract that we've had with Steamboat Days for several years. It does modify the area where alcoholic services are provided, from being in specifically for the port, and then, and as well as language that allowed for the Steamboat Days event itself to encapsulating all three facilities for the entire year, along with Steamboat Days event. The, a good chunk of the, of the agreement also covers responsibilities for the two parties back and forth. We've waived the rental fees for Steamboat Days in here, and that goes back to the AMF contract negotiations that we've previously done. It has a significant amount of language in here in regards to the level of service from city staff and assisting with setup, teardown, and the monitoring of events during the course of Steamboat Days. And I'm sure I'm missing something. It has some language in here in regards to if the carnival were to be. There's, there isn't a plan at the moment for a carnival for this next year, but we do have provisions in here for, in the future if the carnival were to return as part of the event. I don't know, Stephanie, if you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Stephanie Kuzloski, past president of Burlington Steamboat Days.
You're looking tall tonight.
Yeah, I have heels on. I just, we can take a picture if you want. Big thing, I think the big changes were it's a three-year term to coincide with the AMF contract, and then the other thing, we did raise the cap on labor. Because it's a three-year contract, there may be changes to the rate that we're charged for labor from city employees, so we raised the cap on that. I think Jim covered everything else.
Specifically in the area of police.
Correct. Correct.
Before you go. Eric, do you have that map, Exhibit B? Do you have that?
It juts, the map shows the jutting right through Two Rivers Building instead of on the street. It should be the street between the two.
All right, you know, that did make sense to me.
That should be Jefferson Street. That should be Jefferson Street.
Yes.
I'm good now.
Okay.
I do, I do have a question. You are covered on the depot because that wasn't on the map either.
Yes.
The, the, the map is specifically showing your layout for the Steamboat Days event, the festival.
Correct, yeah, that map is supposed to only be for the Steamboat Days event, festival period.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Thank you.
Any quick concerns from the audience? I see none. Council? Kathleen?
Wilson? Aye. Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move the approval of Burlington Depot rental rates.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. McGregor?
As you'll see in your packet, this resolution will approve rental rates for the Burlington Depot, which have never had rental rates established there. With the great room renovation, we now have a large space that's available for rental. As you can see there, the, there's three different classes that break that up. We modeled the, the rates of the depot similar to the North Bay and the Port because they have similar type functions. The depot does not have access to tables and chairs. It is, it is climate-controlled. There is a little bit of an accessibility issue with that building. It's, it always has to be open for, for public transit purposes, and the, the rate schedule follows the same timing as the auditorium and Port do, so I can answer any questions on those if you have any.
Any questions from the audience? I see none. Council?
No.
No.
Kathleen, let's do this.
Wilson? Aye. Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Number three?
Your Honor, I have a resolution establishing a two-hour parking limit at the 200 block of Jefferson Street.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Mack?
This resolution here will put into place a two-hour parking limitation on the 200 block of Jefferson. Previously, it had been modified from a 30-minute to one hour. The project is now complete, the parking is now open, and to resemble the rest of Jefferson Street, staff recommends approving the two-hour limit change.
Looks nice, by the way. Nice improvement.
He'll talk later. Questions or concerns from the audience? Mr. Renteria?
Eric Renteria, 907 High Street. Just a, a couple of questions on this. It's my understanding that there's going to be some reserved spaces for police business on this. Is that, is that correct?
Two spots?
Yeah, right, three, at least. So, look at the-
There'll be a handicap and then three spots specifically for police business.
Right, so, as a business owner downtown, I don't have people that come into my shop and have parking that's specific for doing business with, with me, and, and there's ample parking downtown, so I'm not sure that I understand why the fire department and the police department have so many parking spots blocked off for their use in routine business. And when you look at the fire department, they've got about six or seven spots in the flat lot over by Drake Hardware. They've got about six spots on the street wrapped around the, the fire department, and those spots are, are always empty. And, and the police department has, is getting a new building, and they're getting a new parking lot, and there isn't any more urgent business to me than my business. Why do I have parking spots that should be available to the public in front of the police station and in front of the fire station?
Which is a different issue.
Right on.
Come on, we got.
I hear you. Any, any other concerns or comments from the audience? I see none. Council? Kathleen?
Wilson? Aye. Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving an agreement between the city of Burlington, Iowa, and Alliant Energy Incorporated for an all-night lighting service at Core Street.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Mack?
The resolution before you would approve putting a light on a, a current pole that Alliant owns. As you can see on the map, there are three yellow dots on Core Street that currently have LED streetlights. The request is at the red dot at 1120 and 1118's corner for a new installation. At the last meeting, I did recommend not approving this because of the current lighting situation that they have, so I can answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the audience? I see none. Council?
I agree with Mr. McGregor. I drove down that street Friday night at 10:00, 10, or 10:05, and it looks well lighted to me. I really didn't see an issue.
Man, you were up late that night.
I was late. You party guy, you-
I would agree with you on that. I mean, we have plenty of streets that are dark, but that, I didn't, did not see that one as bad.
Okay. Kathleen?
Wilson? No. Phillips?
No.
Davidson?
No.
Fleming?
No.
McCambe?
No.
Number five?
Resolution approving, your honor, sorry, I'm new, I'm new. Resolution approving an agreement between the city of Burlington, Iowa, and Alliant Energy Incorporated for all-night lighting service in the Sunrise West subdivision.
You got a second?
Second.
Right on.
This resolution here would approve putting in four new streetlights in the Sunrise West subdivision, located here on the map, as you can see, at the yellow dots. A little harder to see are the, the current streetlights that are there. They are seen as a little light with, with rays coming out of them. Based on the previous conversation, if you would show the type of lighting that's occurring out, currently out there, this is a 20-foot pole with a colonial or an aesthetically pleasing type light. It does not put off very much light. The glass is fairly opaque. There are some newer lights out there that follow the same shape, but they're clear with LED. Based on the type of light requested, which is the same, I do not recommend approval of those same types of lights being installed.
Thank you, sir. Any, any concerns from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Anne Fedler, 1202 Messiah Drive. I am currently the president of the board of directors of Sunrise West.
What was your last name, ma'am?
Fedler, F-E-D-L-E-R.
Okay.
I thank you, first of all, for allowing me a moment of your time. I'm here to clarify and give you some additional information regarding these lights. They will go on this black pole and not a tall wooden pole, as was alluded to in the paper last week. There will be a lantern LED light on top. There will be four, two on Messiah, North Messiah, South Messiah, one on Heller, and one on Erickson, all LED. The, an installation and light will be paid for by Sunrise West. That is $516 per light with installation. The city's responsibility at that time would be $6.86 per month, per light, for the lighting. Let me share with you another thing. It is senior housing, and I think it behooves the city of Burlington to maintain safety for the senior citizens. It's not only physical safety, but it's emotional safety. They have a problem with coming home at night, and it's dark, and it is dark. The current lights, we have two LEDs, one on Mr. Fleming's corner and one on my corner.
Yes.
They recognize the important people that lived, that lived in that development? Okay.
I also want to, I want to share with you, too, a few years ago, we were mandated to increase the footage of sidewalk, which we did, a lot, to a lot of dollars. That sidewalk is being used now, not only by Sunrise West, but by the people from the villages. They come through Messiah quite regularly and walk, walk their dogs, and they come through when it's not too light, and they come early in the morning. So, I think it would be in the best interest of Burlington, the city of Burlington, to allow us, at Sunrise West, to put in the four lights at $516 apiece. Do you have any questions?
Well, I guess I'm confused. So, is, is, is it going to be a different style light than what was shown?
Yes, exactly. The pole will be black, painted black. It will be a lantern-type fixture on top with an LED bulb. That's what we have there, except now we just have the regular old bulbs that are about, I think, maybe 60 watt.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nick?
Ma'am?
Ma'am?
Thank you.
Now, were these the, were these the ones that you said were the yellow, had the yellow covers? I just want to, I just want to get a clarification on that.
I think somewhere in the installation of the original ones versus the ones that have probably been replaced, that we noted, they cleaned, they cleared up the glass. The LED ones do have more light that come out of them than, than this one's shown. I did not take a picture of the LED one.
Okay, okay.
Just to clarify.
Any other questions or concerns from the audience? Okay, I see none. Council?
Again, I was driving through there at night. This one was earlier.
Sure was, buddy.
And she's, and she's exactly right in what she's saying, that the two that are upgraded are right. If they'd upgrade the rest of them, I don't see how you'd have a need for more lights. And actually, I have a friend who lives there on Messiah Drive, and he says when he goes for a walk, every house along the line, the motion sensor kicks on, there are light on the garage anyway, so he's saying, don't put any more lights up there.
Somebody that lives there is saying, don't put lights up there?
Yeah.
Well, I guess that's where my confusion was. I would much rather see us investigate upgrading the ones that we have already before we add more to an, if the LED, if it's got to be that style of light, now, you know, I, I'm not sure if that's even the best style of light to have in our community, but if it's got to be that, I'd rather see us upgrade the ones that are to the LED, so I, it makes it a tough call for me.
On top of that, it's, it'd be 20, or roughly $28 a month.
Right.
No, if Sunrise West is willing to pay that themselves-
I'm speaking again.
Go on down, please.
Yeah, I guess if Sunrise West is willing to pay that themselves-
I certainly wouldn't want you to change the style of the light on Sunrise West and totally ruin the aesthetic value of the lighting. We will get LED lighting on the current poles as they no longer function. I was assured that by a person from Alliant. They replace the light, the current lights, with LED, but the LED do, they shine bright where they are, but they do not go out very far.
Okay, and Nick, what was your, what was your recommendation on that?
What was my recommendation?
No, ma'am, I, I got your recommendation.
No, what my?
After speaking with Brayden, who deals with lights quite a bit, these lights are lofted way too tall on a pole. They're, they're more meant to be at like 12-foot high, but they're currently at 20. I, my recommendation is to not go ahead with this, to not approve these installation until the other ones are upgraded to see what that can look like.
Thank you, sir. Okay, council?
Living there, I have a conflict of interest, I guess. I'd like to see what happens.
Are we good? Kathleen?
Wilson? No. Phillips?
No.
Davidson?
No.
Fleming?
Yes.
McCambe?
No.
Okay.
Your Honor, I move the authorization of an eternal loan from the general fund to the tax increment revenue fund.
Second.
You got a second? Uh, Mr., thank you.
You know, what I'd like to do here to make things easy is address-
All of them at once?
All, all of them at once, rather than-
That sounds good.
Make life easy. I haven't had supper yet either.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I guess on, I'll just go through what I'm looking for here. On resolution two, why are we borrowing money from the general fund?
We use the TIF fund to cover our expenses associated with TIF. In order to do that, this is the process legally we're required to go through, and don't ask me why, I just follow what the attorneys tell us on, on moving funds around to make sure that we can do that appropriately, but if we're going to be involved with TIF, which you would say we shouldn't-
Right.
But if we are going to be involved with TIF, we, we want to, I mean, the goal here But if we are going to be involved with TIF, we, we want to, I mean, the goal here is to try to get it to cover the costs associated with making it happen. So that's what this is intended to do, is to cover attorney fees that we pay for out of the general fund, as well as some staff. But last year, our attorney fees were more than what the $20,000 was. But that's, that's the intent here.
Okay. I guess three, four, and five are kind of written in Greek. What are we really doing there?
So these go back to three different arrangements or agreements that were done. Two of them were back in 2012 with Weingard when they did the extension of their facility at the Fairway Shopping Center. That part of that process, they had an agreement from the council to have TIF rebate over 10 years. 75% for the first five and 50% rebate for the second five. We had not to exceed amount on that project.
I guess my, my question there is, for these items, what, how much money are we talking about for each of them?
Okay, so that one, for this year, this is the fifth year of the agreement. This year's appropriation is $180,000. Is out of the, we had a not to exceed of just shy of 1.4 million that could go towards that project. The Greater Burlington Partnership is in the, is year five of that agreement for the Shell Building. The amount on that is $45,000 for this year.
Okay, I'm trying to find where I'm at here. The $180,000, that was for Weingard?
Correct.
Okay.
Greater Burlington Partnership, that was originally as part of the sale of their spec building. We had a not to exceed of $500,000, 100% of property tax rebate over a 10-year period. Year five is $45,000. And the, the third one is with Burlington Crossing for the Manor Property. That was done in 2015. This is the first year on that agreement and it was set up on a 12-year schedule, not to exceed $10 million. The first year is not on pace to get us to that. It's $70,000 is a rebate for the first year. But it's 100% for the first six years of the agreement and 80% for the second six years. We do these as annual appropriations because the annual appropriated amount is what counts towards the debts, the debt limit of the city. So when, and whenever an entity enters into an agreement like this with the city, they're subject to the risk of the city council not approving these agreements on an annual basis.
Alls I got to say is that, that repave a lot of streets. Thank you.
But it's true that this money that we're paying out of this, is what Mr. Weingard's company has paid in already and we're just rebating some of this to him, is that correct?
However you want to phrase that. Their first agreement, I'm not exactly sure how that one was done because that was originally done prior to me.
I'm sure that's the way it was set up.
So, so you would know more details, you were on council at the time?
Any other concerns from the audience? I see none. Okay, Kathleen?
Wilson? Aye. Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Your honor, I move approval obligating funds from the general for the Greater Burlington Partnership, TIF rebate sub-fund of the city's urban renewal tax revenue fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in succeeding fiscal year.
Thank you. Thank you. Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote on it.
Wilson? Aye. Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Your honor, I move with approval obligating funds for the Weingard TIF rebate sub-fund of the city's urban renewal tax revenue fund for appropriations to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in succeeding fiscal year.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote on it.
Wilson? Aye. Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Your honor, I move obligating funds, I move obligating funds for the Burlington Crossing TIF rebate sub-fund of the city's urban renewal tax refund, revenue fund for appropriations to the payment of the annual tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in succeeding fiscal year.
Second.
Moved in second. Thank you, sir. And ma'am, Kathleen, let's vote on it.
Wilson? Aye. Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Well done. Good job tonight. This is time that we will entertain comments from the audience. Is there anybody that has, yes, sir, Mr. Neri? I see you come hat, we'll get to you.
Eric Renteria, 907 High Street. I have a couple of things that I wanted to bring forward. One is to get an understanding of the, of the process that council, council uses to make some decisions. At the last meeting, I brought forward a proposal on, on parking. And I found out today that, that that process is not going to be addressed. That the council has decided not to enact that. Was that done at work session?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Was that, was that decision to not move forward with that, was that done at, at the work session last week?
You're, you had a request come at the previous regular session during this period from Mr. Renteria for the council to consider this. And there is some desire from, from two council members to express potentially bringing it forward. They couldn't have taken that action to put it on the agenda at that meeting. Those two members also said after that that they didn't have a desire to see it come to this, this next meeting. You didn't have a member of the council who was asking for it to be on a work session agenda essentially. So it never made it to a work session agenda. However, if the council were to desire to revisit, I mean, they, they got your information. If they do have a desire to see this come and they, they, they want to see it put onto a work session agenda, it will be. But the ones who had expressed that they, they would like to see it on also then later said that they didn't have a desire to see it. Because they've gone through this topic a couple of times and they've had a committee look at it. But again, if the council does want to have it come back, again, this is a topic that can come back for further discussion at a work session.
So, so my, my question then is, if a person wants to bring a proposal forward, it, it doesn't seem as though that's decided against in the work session. It never makes it to a council meeting because it's not on the agenda. I just don't understand how the process works in terms of introducing a concept to the city council and having them actually discuss as legally required in, you know, the, to, if you're going to, voting no is making a decision as much as voting yes.
They never voted anything on this. Part of, even from the two who said that they didn't have a desire to see it on, part of what was mentioned was, this was a topic that they had a committee that studied this for a year. And you mentioned that your comments went to that committee. They presented their proposal to the council. That proposal then, after one of your requests to have it reviewed, was reviewed at a work session. You weren't able to make it that, that night. And they didn't move forward with anywhere. They received your email with your proposal for, and then had you come to a, a meeting. They didn't have a desire from the two who would set, said during your comments the last session that they would have an interest in seeing it. The two who said that that would, that they could bring it up at a future meeting changed their mind. That, there was, the, the way it goes on an agenda is if you have a couple of council members who want it on. If they decide they, the two who decided that they wanted it on don't, because they've gone through, they felt that they've gone through the topic enough, it doesn't, it doesn't make it to an agenda. It doesn't, that doesn't mean that there was a vote to no on it. However, if the council does want to have this come up again as a con, as a work session item, it can.
Right. So what I'm, all I'm really trying to do is to figure out how this works. Because the, my impression is that there was a decision not to move forward with this, okay? Informally or formally or however. And the, and the issue that I, that I really am trying to address with this is that if, if a proposal is brought forward by a person in this community and it's decided to not be taken up by city council, there isn't any rationale that comes back to the citizen as to why this wasn't pursued. So you're kind of left in the dark. And I, what I, what I'm really trying to figure out is how to work with this council, submit ideas, get a rationale, whether it agrees with my position or not, but at least to get something back that says, this is why we did it, or this is why we didn't do it as a council. And, you know, because there, there are other things that I would like to bring forward. You know, I have two businesses downtown. I just signed a lease on a, on a third. I've got a lot of things that I'm working on. All of this is very important to me. And if I can't work with the council because I don't know how it works, then there's a problem. So I don't really know where all of these folks stand on, on the, on the parking situation. I can't, I can't arrive at rationale on my own. I, I've given a lot of energy to this. This is extremely important to me going forward. I reread the study that was done on parking. You can debate almost every point that's in the study. And ultimately, the, the solution that was put forward doesn't solve any of the issues that were brought forward by the, by the parking study. So I, I have grave concerns. And I guess really what I'm asking for is, when I come to council and I bring this up, it's not on the agenda, so you guys can't talk about it. But it doesn't get talked about in, anywhere that I can see it either. And so I'm not sure how it works. And I just want to understand how this works. So that when I bring stuff forward to this council, it's important to me as a downtown retailer with multiple businesses and a citizen of this town, I want to know how this process works. And I don't know how that is right now. So that's what I'm really trying to figure out. And I, and I would like, and it can't be addressed at this meeting. I would like to understand the rationale for not fixing the parking problem that we have downtown right now. Because we haven't fixed it yet. And, and I'm, I'm griping, but I really am trying to help. And I really want, I, I think this is important enough to all of us that we should, that we should do something. We went to all those meetings, we had all that discussion and what came out of it was not what was discussed at any of those meetings, which is crazy to me. But I do need to understand this process. So I'm going to continue to ask all of you to help me understand how to work with the council and how to get stuff submitted and get it discussed and get some feedback so I know where you're at. Because right now, I don't know where any of you are at. And it's an important issue to me. So with that, I'll, I'll get off my soapbox.
But I do want to encourage you to keep bringing forward ideas.
Oh, I do.
I encourage you to bring it forward.
I appreciate that.
Jim, I have a question for you. So if somebody doesn't come to a council meeting or email any of us, there is no way for them to be put on a discussion?
They can come to, to staff and we can, we can bring it forward. Actually, when this was brought forward first from Mr. Renteria, we put it on a work session and you had a discussion about it in June or July specifically to address it. He, again, wasn't able to be here. If you wanted to have it, that discussion rehashed, you can as, at a subsequent meeting. It just takes having a desire to see.
I just wanted to make sure.
Reconsider that proposal.
I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that it wasn't something that, you know, somebody had to come to a meeting to say, hey, I want this or.
Typically, what a lot of the items that you end up having come through are items that are, either require an action, a letter of support for a given project or something like that. So you'll see a lot of the stuff that ends up on the agenda is because you've got an individual or a group or, or whatever who, who's got an item such as that. A lot of the items that you have that are specifically work session items that have come from members of the public are, come out of this session right here. The items at the end of, of a meeting where you end up with a couple of council members who say, yes, we do want to have a talk about that. Those are the, the typical ways to see it. There are some things that come to a staff member that are separate from an actual action item that, that are more of a, a policy discussion and they get put on that way. But, you know, it's, there's, there are a few different routes for that to happen.
Thank you.
Come hat.
Come hat, yay. I got a come hat right there. I like to say basically, I might hear that often, but I, you know, Thanksgiving is Thursday that I am thankful that we have a police force here to, they may not be perfect all the time. They're human, they make mistakes, but they do a pretty good job. And I like to thank the policemen for their hard work to protect this. Without this, we would have chaos. The fire department, I am thankful we have them because they come to rescue people and there's trouble, danger, a house on fire, anything, they're there for us and thank you for that too. I'd like to thank the city council and, and you that.
Don't thank him, don't thank him.
For, for what we, what we have right here. We have the sit and talk about things. About the parking, I do agree, I'm biased because I work down here. But somebody told me where the fire station is, that park, why it's empty is because they used to be for free for the fire department people. And then they started charging them, then people stopped parking there. But we do need to deal with that because more people moving down there. And that's going to issue that we have to deal with. I'm on the same old thing here. Basically Cascade Bridge, maybe shoot like Jerry, Jerry Lewis did, have a telethon and maybe ask people to give money to build that bridge. Because I still think if we had that bridge, it would be a great access for that park. That's a beautiful fantasy park. And I just think it's just, we have to build a new one. You cannot, you cannot fix that bridge. It's just no doubt about it. But I want to wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving, gobbo, gobbo. Don't eat too much and be thankful for what you have. And I'm starting a Christmas card, so all of you here got to be nice, not naughty. And thank you. And the guy right there, John, I'm not very good with names. But I wish all the best a lot. May Lord Jesus Christ give wisdom and guidance. Being on the council and all of you, peace be with you, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you.
Aren't you a 2017 mayor's award winner? Anyways, I just figured that, throw that out there. Anybody else from the audience? I see none. Okay. You guys have been fantastic tonight. Mr. Tisland, No Shave November. All right. Kathleen? Annie?
Of course. One, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Enjoy the time you have with loved ones. Friday is Friends of the Library Black Friday Book Sale. So that's always exciting. I love book sales. And that is from eight in the morning to 4:00 PM. Got to get some good deals. And then of course Saturday is Small Business Saturday, which I always like to highlight on just because that is our downtown. You know, get out there and go shopping and get your Christmas shopping done. You know, shop local. And, you know, while you're down there, I think some of the places down there are having, you know, some promotional things. One that caught my eye was Mimosas and Breakfast Pizza at Olive Wine from seven to 11:00 AM. So get out there and get.
Your mimosa.
Mimosas. Local shopping done. And, oh, oh, one more. The Lighted Holiday Parade is also Saturday, starts at 5:00 PM. And that's downtown. So bring out all the kiddos.
A lot going on. Mr. Phillips?
I, I enjoyed it. Thank you for, you know, my couple of minor mistakes. I would echo what you were saying. Definitely, if you're going to do some holiday shopping, don't do it online and don't go out of town. Buy it here. Doesn't matter where you buy it, but buy it local. Thanks.
All set. All right. I just want to again welcome John Phillips to your first meeting and.
I got my bracelet.
You got your bracelet?
Held that over my head.
That's right, that's right. Also just want to say Linda Murray is here, you're not, haven't been sworn in yet, but you haven't missed a meeting since you started running. Do you got anything you want to say tonight? Okay. Well, I was just going to give you the option because you came. So it's good to see you participating already and you haven't been sworn in yet, just good to see you. Rob Sussman?
Delaware.
Delaware.
Talk about the talent loss right there.
Burlington was a good town before you got here. And I'll tell you what, you, you definitely added to it. And I've been giving you a hard time since you got here. You take it well. And we're going to miss you. So I don't give out compliments very often without giving a jab to go along with it. But Rob, you've been great for us. It's been fantastic doing radio shows with you. And I just want to say personally, I wish you the best. Tell your wife that she is the best part of you and make sure you remind her that. Also, I'm, I'm giving a plea to, to downtown businesses in downtown Burlington. I was driving through the downtown and I was coming down, looking at the Snake Alley lit up. And then I, then I took a right on Jefferson. I just zigzagging around checking everything out. A lot of people have a lot of lights. It's looking beautiful down there. But there's a lot of buildings that don't have any lights. And I'm just going to encourage you that if your electrical is good, let's light it up. Let's light up downtown Burlington. People love to drive downtown and look around. They'll get out their cars and they'll shop. Let's light it up. If you've got lights, let's, let's get some lights up. I'd even love to see lights up on the fence that's around, that's around a building where they're doing some work. But, but I just would like to encourage downtown Burlington business owners. If you don't have lights, call me. I'll buy you some lights if you'll put it up. So we just like to see Burlington. I would love to see that. I would love to see that. Also, there's going to be a Thanksgiving dinner at the high school. For those of you that don't have anything going, it's a great time. I've been there a couple of times with a turkey hat on. I'll be doing a, I'll be visiting again this week with a different type of hat, so it'll be a surprise. But if you don't have anything going on. I forgot with the welcome, I'm welcoming you also because we have two bald guys now on the council and Bald is coming back in a big way. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Bald is beautiful, baby.
That's it. That's all I got. Jim Davidson?
Rob, do you, do you have an update on what's still needed for the dinner? Can you tell us about that? Do we still need supplies and volunteers and? I hate to put you on the spot like that.
We, actually, we just had a presentation at my Rotary meeting today about it. And I talked to them and there's still need really for everything. They're still looking for volunteers. And there's still need really for everything. They're still looking for volunteers, particularly for cleanup. It's always a hard one to get for. But they also said they need people as early as 7:00 o'clock in the morning on Thanksgiving Day to start cutting the pies and getting things ready for all the homebound delivery that they do. So there's still a need of volunteers, and they still need some turkeys, the canned goods.
Who would they contact if they wanted to volunteer? How would they get there?
You actually called the library. And if you saw, there was a really nice article in the paper today, 52 Faces on the Blythe family. Lois Blythe has been with the library for 29 years, and she has been with the community Thanksgiving dinner the whole time that it's been around. And so she coordinates giving everybody their volunteer assignment. So you can just give us a call at the library and we'll get you hooked up with that. And of course, they also take monetary donations, which you can do at Community Action.
Thank you, Ron.
Sure.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Well done, Bishop, city manager. Is that all you got?
Yeah, one more thing. Sadly, the golf course closed on Friday.
That's why he's wearing black. He's in mourning, man. He's sick, man.
Yeah, sadly.
Jim Fernando?
So a couple of things. This last week was nice. Linda actually made it over to Municipal Leadership Academy in Fairfield, so I think- She's smarter. She was already incredibly smart, so now she's-
So now she's incredibly smarter? All right.
But that's a good training that the league puts on and for Matt or John, if you were to be able to make it to any of those, you're certainly encouraged to. And actually, one of the things they mentioned was MLA is done over, I think they, it's four different sessions. This is the first one. First full week of January, you can do a video one. And they encourage all the, all council members, if possible, to do it. I think I've been in one place where all council members did it once.
If I remember right, when I first started, if you go to all of them, and then you go to League of Cities meetings, you get a nice little award for it.
Yeah, there's a third one in the spring, and then the fourth is the culmination of it, is attending the league conference in the fall. And yes, you do get a little certificate or award, and it's, those are announced at the fall conference. Matt attended our budget meeting. The league also does a series of budget meetings for, I mean, it's more primarily addressed towards staff and doing the budget forms, but it also had a pretty good session on urban renewal or revitalization law. It meant so much to me. I can't remember which title it is for TIF. So it was a good, I think, good training for him to have someone go through the process of what TIF is for, what it's not for, how it can work, and what you shouldn't do. Nick?
Good evening. Again, Agency Street, you've noticed that the North Lane is still closed. They poured a bunch of sidewalk, they knocked out quite a bit of sidewalk the other day. They will shift now. I think they're going to try and trench in some fiber to connect the two lights. And then you'll see them move over to the driveway nearest Jimmy Johns and Perkins, and they'll start knocking out that. Got me confused. The flood wall, you might have noticed, they're no longer driving piles, so you no longer hear in the clanking. They are moving on the mass wall fairly well. They did have to bump around to knock out something. But there's a sample section of the flood wall poured down there. If you get a chance, I'd like to maybe take you down there and see what you think. We're kind of at a point where maybe we have to make a decision if that's what we really want, because we could, we could change our mind and, you know, do something different. So if you're interested in going down there, give me a ring and I can arrange that. So Saturday, my snowplows will be in the parade. They will not, however, all be on the trucks. We don't have enough drivers to drive 12 trucks through the parade, so I will be putting them on flatbeds tomorrow and lighting that up.
Sweet, sweet.
That's all I got.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Okay. Jim?
Your snowplows?
Takes ownership of his truck.
Nothing else.
Nothing else? Okay, I just want to thank everybody again. You guys have been a fantastic audience tonight. Thank you so much for all your support. Bishop?
Your honor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming? Fleming?
Yeah, he said aye.
He said aye.
McCampbell?
Aye.
This means adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you, counsel.